Go call.
Mayor Reese.
Here.
Councilmember Ask.
Here.
Nelson.
Here.
Davis.
Here.
Seldus.
Here.
O'Brien. Butterfield. Osmus.
Here.
Fagerly.
Here.
Seven present, two absent.
Then put a pledge. Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America against a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Any additions? All right, well, you can't take much off with it. There's not much on that.
We do have Bruce Virtual.
Oh, okay.
Hey, Bruce.
Bruce Virtual, got a new last name.
Yeah.
It's probably a lot easier to say the Schwartzman.
So the council does have your proposal in front of them, Bruce, if you want to walk through what we had talked about with the auditorium. That's what we're at right now.
After speaking with Leslie, we put together, we talked through it, what the scope might be to better understand how the auditorium could be used, what that layout might look like, what it would take to do that, and then what the cost of that kind of construction might be. So luckily, the city was able to provide some existing drawings, and one of our first steps will be to come out and verify the building, kind of walk through it, just generally understand where the electrical panel issues are, what the mechanical system looks like, understand the roof a little bit more, and just the overall shell of the building. So we can understand, are there some maintenance issues that we need to address as part of the study? And we'll also just verify some general dimensions and things like that, get some additional pictures. The second step then will be to do some conceptual plans and take the program that we had developed with various city departments and see how we can make that space work in there. The only piece of the program, of course, that won't be in this building is there was a discussion about having some indoor parking for some of the city vehicles. So that would be separate, they'd have to be parked outside and whatnot. So what we'll do is do literally floor plans to show how the spaces lay out. Now, clearly, that's not all going to fit on the main level of the auditorium. So we're going to have to build a second level in there to be able to accommodate the second, all the city offices that are required. And so we put an elevator in the building, but we'll develop concept plans, and again, we'll meet with the various city departments, with Leslie and whatnot, excuse me, to go through and make sure that the plan works. The other thing we'll look at too is, you know, knowing that we're adding offices in the building, the last thing we want to do is put people in dark cavernous spaces. So we'll be looking at adding windows primarily on the north and south elevations of the building, the ones that aren't the primary main entrance of the building. I'm sorry, excuse me for one second. I should have learned as a kid not to whip my dinner down. But anyway. So when we start looking at that, we're going to start looking at adding some windows to the exterior of the building. And there, you know, we don't want to touch the west elevation, which is the primary historic elevation. So as we're developing what that might be, we're going to talk to the state historic preservation office and make sure whatever we're doing complies with historic guidelines and we're not really detrimentally affecting the building at all. Once we have that planned together, we can really start to look at what the cost implications are. And we're going to also talk to our structural engineer, one of our leading structural engineers, because if we do add that second level, we're going to have to add some foundation and structure to the internal core of the building to support that second level. So we'll do some concept plans, look at the framing and how that might occur, look at any additional foundation. The other thing that we'll do is we'll work with Leslie. If there's some asbestos remediation or lead remediation or some of those other things, we'll work with Leslie and other organizations that we've dealt with, testing agencies that we've dealt with before to help get some information on that so that when we put together a cost estimate, you all know holistically what are all the costs are going to be associated with that project. And then we basically put all that together and presented to you with the options, how to reuse the auditorium, what the state historic preservation office stated, what the plans might look like, and what the costs might be. And I think we're shooting for some time in the early part or middle of November to get all that done. And now, there was a typo, I have to apologize. When I looked through the proposal, we got it out quickly today. In the second paragraph, it did talk about utilization of the hardware store and it also mentioned the community center. Neither of those are considered part of this. The hardware store, we're understanding, is not part of this plan, it wouldn't be in it. And in talking to Leslie on the community center, I think it's not included in this proposal, but I think what might be a good idea is, once a group is established to study the various options for community center, we'd be glad to assist in just doing an initial presentation of the things we've studied to date, you know, the area and things like that. But that's really separate from the auditorium. I think with that, Leslie, mayor, council, whatever questions you all have.
Audrey.
So this is a little different than I was anticipating from the standpoint of, I thought we were going to research from the historical side about what we could and couldn't. Almost like that phase one of, you know, when you said the best use of the building kind of concept, if the building was left to be utilized for kind of as some of the things that are there now. So I'm not convinced yet. I mean, I'm thinking kind of phase one, phase two, find out from what our options are before we proceed with designing something for City Hall, because I'm still interested in hearing about Block 50 and, you know, what we had talked about, those kinds of things. So I'm just curious with, if it's just me thinking that way or if other people are thinking that way.
We've done a lot of historic projects, councilman, and what they... First off, I'm not sure that the project is on the state historic preservation list. We need to verify that. I don't believe the city has received any historic funds, which kicks in another level of requirements for the building and what you can and can't do. But we've dealt with a lot of historic buildings, and typically what the historic societies look at is preserving the predominant elevation, the predominant views of the building. Well, the predominant view of that building is the west elevation, the main entrance, and those freezes that are up above the door and a detail there. We're not going to touch that. If we have to, if anything, there might be a discussion about bringing... The windows that have been installed in that building are clearly retrofit windows. They don't look historic in any way. If anything, there might be some discussion about bringing back more historic windows on that elevation. The other thing they look at is predominant entrance areas in the building. So if you come into an old courthouse or a church and you walk into that center core, a lot of times that entrance area is very elaborate, very ornate. Those are the areas they look at that have historic significance. I don't believe, other than the primary room, the historic room off to the north side, I forgot what that room is called.
The memorial room.
Yeah, the memorial room. Other than that room, which I think is very important to keep that intact, I'm not sure there's a lot of other historic significance to other areas. But again, one of the first things we'll do is talk to the state historic preservation office and look at that. So when you talk about a phase one, phase two, I think we're including that as part of this.
The first, so the first two things you said was that's what is what I thought we were trying to get to to help us understand, is it on the start register? And where are we at before we would just automatically have you, you know, see how everything would fit?
And we can definitely do that. We could definitely break this up into two steps like that to help make sure, okay, what are the rules of engagement before we really start the planning of it? We can definitely do that. And really, within a week, probably by the end of this week, I would have all the information from the state. So it's not a lot of work involved in pulling that together.
I just was curious where other council members were, if that's what's their same assumption? Because, you know, we had talked about an RFP for lead abatement. We didn't get any response, and somebody indicated they were interested. I thought we were doing that too, and we're not. So I'm just curious with what we're, you know, kind of what we should be doing.
Well, the lead abatement's an important part of it. And my goal would be really to work with Leslie, and there's some companies we know that would, at very least, would give a quote on that. So I just, I need to reach out to them and see if we can get a quote on some of that work.
And what we've thought that if we're going to be redoing this building in the first place, the lead abatement would just be rolled into the RFP of whatever work we're going to be doing instead of having...
I'm not ready to say that we're going to redo the building. I want to know those things before we talk about possibilities for the building. Because I think we could find uses for the building with the out-in being City Hall too, so.
Wondering, the hardware store, is that a shared wall with the auditorium? Are they right next to each other, right?
Inches.
Inches away.
But there is some issue with that east wall and a crack.
There's a hole in the wall.
North?
Yeah, the northeast wall.
Okay.
Which is not... The northeast wall is open because the hardware store does not take up the whole east wall of the building. The hardware store is not as wide as the auditorium.
How do you repair any damage to the wall that is next to the hardware store?
We're going to have to look at that. It depends, I'm assuming it's accessible. If you can see it, then it must be accessible. And the question is, is it a facial crack or is it truly a structural settlement crack? I'll have to have our structural engineers review it and see what's going on. Because if it runs, and I don't know if any of you know if it runs up the full length of the, full height of the building, or what it looks like, but I'd be guessing until we really took a thorough look at it. And then, you know, and then when it comes to those cracks, a lot of times, they've, you know, building that old, it could have happened, you know, over time, and it might not be moving anymore at all. So again, we're going to have to kind of look at that.
I wonder if there were any pictures taken when the hardware store was put up? Because that wall was exposed before that.
So the costs you've put together to do all of that, not just the first parts, right?
Yeah, the proposed fee was to do all the study work I had mentioned. That is true.
Well, I think also, Bruce, if the council wants to just repurpose the building, what work would we have to do anyway that you are currently proposing? Would we do all of this anyway, no matter what kind of work we're going to be doing in that building?
No, no. The only thing that would be, you know, I mean, we'll identify some general issues, like if we see some structural issues of concern, mechanical, electrical roofing, general building shell issues. We'll note that, but if you're repurposing it, it really depends what you're going to repurpose it for. If you're just, you know, if you're just going to make sure you take care of the maintenance issues, you don't have window leaks, or you don't have structural problems, you know, take care of the lead remediation. You know, if it stays in auditorium, it stays in auditorium. Nobody can, the upper levels can't be used in that front section because they're not handicap accessible. So, you know, you really have to be cautious about how you reuse some of that area. It's got limited use, it's basically a big auditorium. Not that you couldn't use it for some kind of theater group or some kind of basketball volleyball events, but, you know.
What about ADA compliant restrooms? What kind of issues will be running there?
Well, it's a two-fold issue if you... There's, the state historic preservation guidelines allow some buildings to kind of stay the way they are if they're trying to preserve historic issues, and they don't require extensive remodeling. You know, so if you really don't touch much, you're not required to do anything. It's when you start touching it, that you start utilizing it for different functions than it currently is, that you potentially, some of the current codes will kick into play. So that just has to be looked at a case-by-case basis. You know, because the reason I say that is, in a big auditorium, the way the current codes are, you actually have to have more bathroom fixtures because of the amount of auditorium space. So most likely, you don't have the amount of toilets and sinks and things like that that would be required for that space. So it's not just accessibility issues, it might be size and capacity issues as well. So that's why it just depends how you're going to use it.
This morning, I met with Kyle and Leslie, and I'm ready to propose that we have Kyle review all the possibles for City Hall and compile a list of pluses and minuses so that we can have a copy of that in front of us when we want to make a decision. I think it's hard for us to do it without some of that. Kyle said he could have that ready by the 18th, right? Now, it maybe isn't so pertinent to have it by the 18th. Bruce isn't going to have the information for the auditorium until November, but...
What would those sites be?
Yeah, and when will we be getting more information on Block 50?
I can tell, I had an update today on Block 50. And the city, I mean, the city could still build on Block 50, but right now, at this time, the developer is probably going to just lapse the letter of intent. It's not that he doesn't want to develop, he wants to very much so. But at this time, the rate interest rates and that are just not allowing them to have the cash flows that they're looking for for the apartment complex. So it has nothing to do with the City Hall, nothing to do with the parking ramp. It has everything to do with what the current interest rate is doing and not being able to cash flow the project the way that his investors would like it to be. So as far as, you know, because the city building would have been totally separate anyway, so it has nothing to do with the structure of the parking ramp or the apartment complex that was being proposed.
And we'd be looking at the north, or northwest corner?
Northwest.
Right across, right next to Frank Law.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that would be just City Hall.
And then would it go the entire length of, was that 4th Street?
No, we would go up like it was proposed, build up instead so that then you still are preserving a lot of that property for future development and not impeding any way on the future development.
So it would be two-story?
Two or three.
Two or three.
I think it's three.
So is that part of the proposal you were asking for Kyle to do?
Yes.
Okay.
And I would think, I don't know this, but I would think that there would be an elevator and put it on the southwest corner of the building and so that it could be utilized if the parking ramp is constructed. Then it could be for City Hall and for the parking.
So what properties would we be expecting to see on that list?
I would say Block 50, the current community center site, and City Hall.
Or the auditorium.
Or the auditorium, yeah.
Those two.
City Hall or auditorium. No, I think it's one. That's my opinion. What did you say? Audrey.
I didn't want to interrupt you, I wasn't done.
I don't have big thoughts though.
Okay. Well, I'm just wondering, when we were talking about this building, we tore down the current City Hall and built a three-story kind of thing that the ADA could be used somehow incorporated into the auditorium for its uses, kind of thing, in that same location and use the parking lot behind, that we already own, behind City Hall. I'm just curious. I don't know.
I told Kyle and Leslie this morning, I have a hard time envisioning how we would utilize that auditorium with a building inside of a building. I just can't, maybe Bruce can give me a better idea, but I... When you talked about foundation, and I thought about going through that floor, going down into that basement with piling or piles to construct on, that seems expensive and complicated.
I've actually done it on some buildings where you take out a window or an opening, and they dig out the foundation, right? So they're going to have to get in the basement and potentially add columns. You're not, you're still using the exterior walls, but, you know, we'd even have to look at the exterior walls because if the exterior walls don't have the proper insulation as required by current Minnesota Energy Code requirements, we would have to provide not an exterior installation, but a new interior installation in the envelope of the building. But basically, we'd be adding steel structure within that for that second floor. So they'd have to come up, we'd have to lay out where the structure is on the main level, and they'd have to come through and cut openings to where the new steel structure would be running up from the basement up to support that second level. And then it's just a matter of understanding where it's tying in and how it's coming together. So once it's done, it's a seamless building, but it takes a little bit of work. It's definitely, and it's not as easy and quick as easy as just building a new building where you're coming ground up and have no impediments, but you are gaining the benefit of reusing an existing building. But there's a lot of work to understand that, a lot of work structurally to understand it, a lot of work with the state historic preservation office to understand limitations and opportunities. We did a similar thing for up in Pennington County at Thirteenth River Falls. They had an auditorium that was only used for, I think volleyball and whatnot, that was owned by the county. And the county paid a good amount of money to keep that building in operation for very little use. And we looked at a number of things to reuse that building, but it was very similar. And we actually even looked at some historic funds at one point too, but for the amount of money they were getting, it was going to actually cost them a lot too, so.
I'm afraid of that east wall in the auditorium, accessibility to maintain or preserve that wall.
It's hard to know what that wall looks like.
Well, it didn't look good before.
So you think there's some... Because it...
Well, it's a real tough point and work. I think that whole wall, that's a big wall.
It is.
Mr. Mayor, isn't that something that's going, if it is a structural issue, that's going to have to be addressed regardless?
Yes.
So that's a cost that's going to be incurred, no matter if we put City Hall or whatever. And if it is a structural, it's cosmetic, then it's not going to be a deal. So.
Yeah, I think, anyway, I pulled up some elevations that I had of the building, and I think there's some cosmetic cracking. I'm not sure it's structural issues. But anyway, we'd have to take a look at that more.
Yes, Audrey.
If we're going to ask him to do this, which, no matter what we do, I think there's pieces of what he's talking about that, that's what we want him to know, right? I don't see that coming back to us on the 18th is going to help us make a decision if we don't have information from him yet.
I agree.
Maybe that's, maybe, I appreciate the fact that he wants to do that, but are we ready for that?
Well, I think Kyle can still do it, but like I said, looking at what Bruce has got in front of us here, if he's not going to be ready until November, it's going to make a difference. We probably need to, we could wait until November. I hate to do that, because I want to get this done.
But during that time, do you still want to have conversations of the use of the building? Because no matter what, you're still going to figure out what you're going to use the building for, right? No matter what kind of work has to be done.
Yeah.
There's a part of me that feels like that's just a conversation in circles. Because either we're going to be able to make it, retrofit it to a City Hall, and if we can, then we have a discussion about what other uses we might have for that building. In the meantime, we're doing a lot of what ifs. And I don't know that that's the best use of our time.
So could we still have Kyle come back within a shorter period of time in November with his findings?
My only thought on that is we have the possibility of, let's say, three sites. If the city, if the auditorium can't be retrofitted because of whether it's preservation issues, then we're down to two sites. Then we're Block 50 or the present community center. So on the 18th, it's not really a discussion yet until we know what's going to happen with the auditorium. That's my feeling.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, council, I didn't mean to. Hopefully by then, I would have some information about SHIPO and the state historic preservation. So a couple of things is I would work with Kyle and Leslie, that we did a lot of study on the other two sites, on Block 50 and at the community center, to see about how things might fit. And so at least we can provide those plans to Kyle and to Leslie to make sure you all have those to revisit the pros and cons associated with it. And by then, I could also have a summary within the next, you know, especially if you're talking a week or so away, I could have a summary on the state historic preservation discussion. Anyway, if that helps.
Yeah, I thought we were going to know that tonight. That's why I thought this discussion was happening tonight, because I thought we were going to know about the preservation issue.
I was hoping so.
Okay. I tend to agree with Julie, though. Putting it together and even more information about Block 50 now that we don't, nothing else is going on, going to go on, or right now. To me, next Monday night isn't going to help me to make a decision any more than the information I have right now. So I think, you know, when we can, I don't want us to keep spinning our wheels or looking at the same thing when we don't have all the information.
Right, I'm sure Kyle would appreciate the additional time.
Yeah.
If I just sprung on him this morning.
I think too, like, I'm starting because I feel like in some ways, like I agree with what Julie was saying about, like, here's the three options. In another way, I got to be honest, I'm not really excited about any of those options anymore. So I've started to wonder about what does, what does going back to the current City Hall and doing a little bit of rehab there look like? Are there other things on the table? I definitely don't, like, I can appreciate trying to narrow and make a decision. That's something that I asked for not that long ago, right? At the same time, I don't feel great about any of these at the moment. I do kind of wonder, like, I don't know that I want to be, we have to pick from one of these three. These are the only three options.
I would say that's where we need more information on Block 50. What could we be getting there? What could we be getting at the auditorium? We just don't know, right?
And I feel like if I go back not that long ago, Bruce brought us information on like seven different properties, one of which was prioritized at Gash Park as being, this is top priority for the community center. And all of a sudden, we haven't heard a thing about it again. So I don't know that there's only.
And I truly was hoping to get more definition for Block 50, what City Hall would look like there. In, as part of the project, and even if I, I could still see that as being a good downtown location for City Hall without it. But it's conceptual, I mean, drives to the parking lot. Oh yeah, we could be here. That's all I know. Right now.
That's really great.
Yeah.
That's where it's kind of pointless that we've said, try to discuss anything when we simply don't know.
Yeah.
What we'd be talking about.
Bruce, can you talk about what it would take to rehab our city office? What are our concerns?
We just, you know, right now you have a lot of space down the basement that's really not utilized and can't be utilized. And we just have to be, have to look at the site and, and how do we accommodate the added space that was identified in the program? I mean, we, we really didn't study that much, um, uh, looking at the existing building.
Are there concerns with asbestos with wall removal?
Interior walls?
Yes. Because we have to, we'd have to remove walls in order to make any, any restrooms bigger.
Yeah.
And they're only, they're only like, if we're lucky, they're four by four.
In, in any of the, in any building that's older than 1960, for the most part, you have to have some asbestos evaluation done. Sometimes it's as simple as seeing that the floor tile are like nine by nine floor tile. And you know, typically those were used asbestos adhesive as well as the tiles themselves were asbestos. So you, so it's a lot of times it's just visually seeing that and you know it's there. Some of the, some of the older projects had glue on ceiling tiles. Again, they used asbestos adhesives to attach that. Um, when I look at a mechanical room and I look at the, the fittings on the mechanical joints, which they used to use a lot of asbestos insulation on pipes. But when it becomes brittle, it becomes airborne and is a problem. Again, most of the time I can look at that and quickly tell, I'm not an expert. I don't, I don't, that's not my area of expertise, but I can visually tell. But like I said, in any building that's older, if there are no records that asbestos abatement has been done or some remediation some way, we always recommend that, that asbestos, uh, uh, specialists come in and look to see, do they think it's there? Um, the first step is do they think it's there? And if they think it's there, to do an analysis of where it is and how much it costs to get it rid of it. So in, in, in any building that potentially could be there, that's older than that. But again, I, I'd be, I, I'm not, I wouldn't be speaking intelligently to talk about the existing City Hall until we dug into it a little bit. We did do some conceptual, um, studying on, on Block 50. When, when the council talks about wanting to understand it better, are you all looking for visual, like we did little block plans that showed, you know, what the footprint might be on the site, you know? So it's very conceptual. It takes up this amount of space. It's two-story, whatever. Are you looking for something a little more, um, and, and we, and we did show some preliminary renderings. Are you looking for 3D renderings to kinda show what it might look like?
For me on the city, present City Hall site, I'm not, I don't think there's.
Block 50.
Block 50 would be interesting.
I think what's confusing, since you brought us those, we've seen a very preliminary proposal that now apparently is no longer valid. The, from the developer that was going to, to develop that entire block was, that's what, that's what I would say.
Yeah, as all, yeah, as all the developer had proposed was a square building at this level.
Right, but Bruce has brought us a
Is that what he's talking about?
Proposal, I think, for Block 50.
Bruce would have to redo, cause he, we would not be doing the concepts that Bruce had shown. We would be doing the concept that we, the developer had shown so that we could preserve the rest of the block for future development.
And that would be interesting to look at, cause yeah, we, we wanna, you know, we have a housing group as part of our company as well, that does a lot of multi-store housing. And just to let you know, we're hearing the same thing because of interest rates, uh, and cost of material, it's getting tougher and tougher right now until things get better for some of these developers to do these projects. But yeah, we would, we would do it, we would design it in such a way to make sure that whenever we do in Block 50, you can ultimately do that housing project in the future. That would be the best approach.
I just wanna say, to clarify my comments about the existing City Hall, I don't know that it's so much about like, like a fully revamped existing building. I think for me right now, if we're not gonna build City Hall with the community center under one roof. There's value in doing that. If we're not gonna do that, then I think the priority is the community center. And I think that the cost of building two separate buildings in the current context that we live in, I, I can see us pushing a new City Hall down the road for a few years and utilizing the existing building that we have until we can get there.
Just help me understand why you think the community center is the priority right now? When we started this, the community center wasn't the priority. City Hall was the priority. And that kind of, I think, has complicated the whole, whole situation. And right now, I think, um, I, I'm just curious. And if we don't have a good location, I don't think, could we exist in City Hall for a couple of years and try to come up with something? Yes, I think we could. Do we need to do some things? Yes. But I'm just confused with, what are our priorities? We have a building, historic building that, that has, has issues. We have a City Hall that has issues. And we have, we have $2 million that we've committed to doing something with the community center. And so.
I think that's why, for me, it's the priority. So that $2 million exists with the local option sales tax. And I feel like from what I've heard from the community, that's the community's priority, you know?
Well, is it? Is it?
That's the question.
Yeah, no, I, I, you know, we're back to that chicken or egg and who are you talking to? And, and with that, and I, I was out at the community center for the, um, pancake thing on Saturday and thought of what a great facility we have and all of the things that we're using it for. And, you know, is there really? I mean, is that, should that really be where we're worried about spending millions and millions of dollars on?
I will say that I think you could say with certainty that the community has prioritized that by, by the referendum and spending $2 million and earmarking $2 million with local option sales tax.
I, I get that $2 million in that there were things that needed to be repaired and checked on out there. I think that was the intent of the $2 million at the time with that.
Voters have given a clear direction for that project, right?
Right. And that money is there to be used for that, but it's not $20 million. It's not, you know, it's, it's not. And, you know, he, he, I mean, even the fact that this developer is looking at pulling back because of interest rates, et cetera. Maybe that's what we should be doing right now too. We missed the window. Did we miss the window? And now we have to wait. Is it gonna get better? Is it gonna get worse?
It's been three years ago.
Yeah, so. Yeah, who knows?
But it's not gonna be that low again for many, many years. Cause it hasn't been that low. Ever, ever been, exactly.
Yeah. So another question that I have is just talking about this development on Block 50 of the apartments and the, um, parking ramp. Is, we're not even for sure that the council is going to approve going ahead with that project.
No. Why, why would we have?
Just a lot of the reference and the statements that are made about we would, that we would compromise or consider the layout of the present City Hall in the northwest corner of Block 50 with the consideration of the development of the parking ramp and, and the apartment.
I was just leaving it open so that you could have future development there besides the City Hall. Right? You know, why, why limit a large, large space like that when you can have more than one, one building there? And why limit that to one? By spreading it out when you don't need to. It's also cost effective to build up than it is to build out.
Right, but I, I just, that's a, that's probably a pretty big conversation that we haven't had yet about if we're gonna give up all of that parking in downtown.
I, yeah, well, I agree, but you, you know, it was put into the Renaissance zone for sale. So I guess previous council must have decided or whatever, however, it got into the Renaissance zone many years ago that it was for development. Cause it wasn't not taken out of the Renaissance zone for development. So it was not earmarked just for parking.
My personal opinion on that would be that's just cause it was the boundaries of the downtown area. And so instead of saying, if we came to Rice Hospital, went up 300 feet, came this way. Well, that, that, that wouldn't be how we would have designated the Renaissance zone.
Yeah, that's just, that's just.
Yes.
No, it was blocked up because you had, you had, um, the municipal utilities blocked out not to be in part of the Renaissance zone. As you would have just colored that block as part of it.
I, I also feel like we need to really protect our parking downtown, just from having worked there. I know it's sometimes all the parking is full. And I'm concerned about that.
Right.
Thought it was interesting. You said it was cheaper to go up than down.
Yeah.
I mentioned that with utilities. We could add or go with them and we could go up two stories and no one wanted to do that. Cause it's cheaper.
Don't think the utilities wants us with them.
Well, I know they've been saying that for years. Then they came and said, yeah, we can partner. And then I said, let's go up two stories or three. And then. It's shut down.
Well, they, I don't, what they wanted was two separate buildings.
Well, they are.
They, they would not mind having this by each other. It's just that they didn't wanna be in the same building together.
Since that we're in a weird spot where it's like, you're looking for direction on what you should be bringing us. We're having a hard time making a decision without information, but sometimes then you wanna go get us information, but then we're comments like, I agree with Julie and Vicki, like I, I'm not interested really in developing that parking lot. You know, so how is it like we have these conversations, you know, like?
Well, then put the City Hall there and develop the parking lot at the same time.
We. Can we, what do you mean say that though? Without knowing what we're gonna have?
Well, I think that's part of the challenge, right? But like if we can, I mean, rather than have Bruce waste a whole bunch of his time and taxpayer money bringing a proposal together for Block 50, if there's five of us that are opposed to Block 50 right now, we should, we should know that now and not later.
Well, then do you, okay. Wait a minute, Block 50 as it was proposed is not there anymore. Putting City Hall on Block 50 is, is a totally different concept than the other. And I was waiting to see what the proposal was going to be before passing judgment on it, to see how much parking there would still be available. I mean, the hospital uses it for some, but there's a lot of, I've driven through the parking lot multiple times on my way to work or on my way home with different timeframe. When are the cars there? Where are the cars from? Who's utilizing? I asked Leslie last week, what is the city's responsibility to provide parking to downtown? And we just cut back parking requirements on lots of other properties. And so should we be providing, providing parking? Or I don't know the answer.
That parking lot on a weekday is 60%.
Yeah.
That's it. 60%.
But, but, but back to the, let's rule out Block 50. I mean, I think you three talked about ruling out Block 50 because you didn't want the, the, a parking ramp there. That to me is different than still City Hall being there.
Well, sorry. Before we had, you know, they brought us a drawing of City Hall on that block. It wasn't three stories. But I think we all didn't pick it because we didn't wanna give up the parking.
Here's the, here's the concept, right?
Yeah, we didn't want that.
Well, that was community center and City Hall though.
No, the one, the one that I've got up on the screen, Leslie, is, is a single-story City Hall.
Oh, a single. So what I'm saying is you can go up and not take up as much space.
Yeah, but you can see there's a good, a good portion of the site that the parking could be remained, surface parking. And you could probably even minimize this plaza a little bit, but if, if you went with a single story, you're basically, or two stories rather, you can greatly reduce this footprint here. Well, I, and you're not gonna get a whole lot of parking back, but you can, can increase parking if you go to two stories.
And then build it up. Now you're probably gonna leave Lake Seria Dental there, cause this, this proposal has currently buying up.
We would have been on the north, we're gonna be on the northwest corner, not where Lake's dental.
Was this proposal from when it came from when we had the seven sites?
Yes.
Okay.
Way back in November.
So this is not anything to do right now. I mean, this isn't what we were looking at now.
No, you were talking, we were talking that we might get a proposal from the developer, but now after the developer is not, is just not viable for him to continue to pursue the apartment, I guess. Had nothing to do with the City Hall being part of it or the parking rail. It's just totally there right now, but, but he is not ruling it out in the future either. He's just waiting.
We went to the old MUC site where they tore down Smokestack. Build City Hall there.
Prefer to be downtown.
Downtown, it's in the Renaissance zone.
I know, I'm out.
If they can build apartments next to the railroad.
Yeah.
Property. Insulated, soundproofed.
Yeah.
I'd rather have it there than at Block 50.
Guess I'd rather be where we are.
Or we can go three stories up in the current City Hall.
There's options. I don't know about that.
You know, there's always gonna be other options. That's why I thought if I had Kyle come together with, I just had the three different locations.
I'm just kinda wondering, like again, from the, that original seven different property proposals, I mean, why did some of them just kinda fall off the table?
Well, as far as the community center, there was no push to build a new community center. The push was to go to JCPenney. Nobody had wanted, nobody was pushing for a new community center. So that's why I'd say that that really fell off the table because that wasn't any of the conversation.
And to go back, I think it was Audrey who was talking. Was thinking about the different locations. If we were to go to the current community center site with City Hall. I see City Hall sitting out closer to the lake coast thing, to the highway. And the community center sitting back. But if, if we go someplace else, I see the possibility of the community center being right where it is, redoing it, remodeling it. So I, I'm, I'm being honest with, with my thoughts that I I was, I was just trying to move us ahead.
Well, we have to wait and see what the legislature says now, since we asked for 10 million for the community center. We can't start a project.
Correct.
Just a, a quick update on that. We did get put on your bond.
Just a quick update on that. We did get put on your bond.
That's what it's gonna ask.
So they will be in Wilmer next month on the 10th.
Who will they?
Uh, this, uh, state funding committee, house, house funding, yeah. Yep, so they will hear out our, hear out our community center.
We're gonna meet with them.
We will probably. And it's, it's out at the college. So you get the 10 minute?
10 minute presentation.
The county asking for something this year.
No, I'll check.
It doesn't feel like to me, this is the right time to make a decision. There's too many, we have too many things. We have to ask the questions, I think, on the auditorium. And I don't think we're ready to make a decision.
When is the right time?
I don't know, but it keeps, it, everything keeps changing.
Well, T maybe.
I, I don't worry about it.
We just need to make a decision on location.
Well, that's, if we, if we can make renovations to the auditorium, that to me is where the City Hall should go because we are going to have to make repairs to that building anyway. And it checks the boxes. Downtown, check. Reuse a historic building, check. Possibly add green space after if we tear down the City Hall and a little bit of parking there, check. You know, I mean, that, I, you know, I probably think it's going to be more expensive. But if we had to put anywhere from five to six million into that building anyway, just because that's what it's going to take to make it usable? And we don't have a purpose for it, then I think we're running ahead spending, let's say if it was going to cost 10 million to build up Block 50. If it's going to cost 16 million to build here, that's money we were going to have to spend anyway. And we're there. That's where I'm at.
I agree, Julie.
Also, if we repair the auditorium just for the sake of having it for something that we don't know what we're going to have it for, now we have to maintain it. We have to have staff there. It's going to be money spent on something we don't even know what we're going to use it for.
That's what we should have been doing and we should have been using. We dropped the ball. And, and so I, I'm, I'm willing to look at, look at the proposal to see what our options are to do it, to do that. And, and to wait and see that out and, and then see what we need to do.
My hope we have is we have an idea of the auditorium. It goes in our favor and we can move ahead with the City Hall at that location. We're done. And then we can move on to the community center option. That's my best case scenario.
Yeah, that's what I think.
Oh, if it's that, yes. Yes, in a perfect world.
It will be that.
It will be.
Is that a promise?
Positively, positively.
Well, then am I hearing that Kyle doesn't need to put anything together?
At this point, at this point, no.
I really got you. Week three, how about that? And I don't, I don't, no, we don't have a consensus of the council, then that's the, that's the scenario, but I'm just voicing my open.
No, I mean, you spoke for me as well, naturally. And I, I just think we need, we need information on these two sites if we're gonna consider still Block 50. We can't make a call knowing what we know now. Yeah, we just can't. We're, we're stuck really until we can get a little more information.
Does that make sense for us?
You're muted, Bruce.
You're muted, Bruce.
Sorry, sorry. The dog was barking in the background, so I didn't mute myself. Uh, yeah, no, this is excellent. I've been keeping notes and this is, this is some good, good conversation. So I think you guys have, have kind of worked through what the pros and cons were and potential sites and the options to go with. So I think putting together the study on the auditorium makes sense to help give you that information.
Okay. Kyle doesn't have to work, but Bruce does.
That's all right. That never stops.
Okay.
I was going to talk about a task force for the community center. Yeah, Julie, yeah. Is that a pertinent discussion right now?
I don't think at this point it is.
Do you think you should wait until we have this information first before we dangle a carrot again?
That's what I was feeling. I wanted your feel on it. We're gonna have a shorter meeting.
That's not all bad.
Are we done here?
So we got our marching orders for, Bruce does.
I think when we present this, I'll definitely be in person because I, I enjoy being there for the conversations. It's a little harder remote.
Yes, it is.
So we'll be voting on his proposal next week? Whatever, or we need to, we don't need to vote on it?
He, he's not going to have this put together.
No, 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 just authorizing him to do this. We'll be voting on that.
Yes, we'll just put in the consent agenda if that's okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Is that the, you had an option?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, Bruce.
Thank you, folks. You have a great evening.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bruce.
Have a good night, everybody. Bye.
All right, we'll go to the 2024 capital improvement plan and budget review.
Kyle and Tom are gonna take you.
So a number of weeks ago, you would have received an email with a similar looking spreadsheet that contains all that's right, the CIP request for next year. When we started this, there was just over $5.7 million in CIP requests. The handout that you're getting now contains all that information. It's just broken up in a few different ways on either proposed eliminations that administration is, is looking at at this time or moving projects around into bonding, into wastewater, wastewater projects or stormwater projects. And then we've also added the equipment to vehicles as well at the bottom. So we'll start right with the top, just going through departments here. Kind of the similar, we're on the same path with the auditorium. We know there's work that needs to be done to the auditorium. But if we're considering the auditorium to be a part of a larger project, we don't know if putting cash into the auditorium makes sense at this time. If future action is to be part of a larger project where it could be bonded or put towards, or towards that. I'll caveat, Earl, also add this. So the current 2023 CIP, there's roughly $600,000 set aside for the auditorium right now. That will carry forward to next year if those funds aren't spent in 2023. So it's not like the auditorium will have zero dollars in the CIP allocated for it. So I'll, I'll pause there on, on the auditorium. I agree. I saw you had a question.
Two, two thoughts. Where in my head, if he comes back with some kind of critical thing that should be dealt with right now.
Yep.
We have that money and we have money this year.
Yes.
If we don't spend it, do we, do, do we need to designate it somehow so that it doesn't get lost like if the other money did?
Yep, so current, it would stay in that CIP fund for 2023 for, for three years.
For three?
Yep.
So we'd have to make some sort of decision.
Unless, unless the council wanted to do something else at that time.
And how much is that? Do we know?
600?
There's about 600, 620, $600,000 currently in that, current 2023. Similar with City Hall, we're just unsure of the fate of City Hall. There is a request for just the, you kind of heard about our bathroom remodel. Again, we're not, we don't know how we feel about putting in dollars to renovate City Hall. And we're not sure what the future of City Hall is too. So there's a, a $10,000, there was a $10,000 ask there that administration has proposed to remove. However, we do want to heat our building. So circulation pumps for boiler system, this was an issue that we found that needs to be addressed to get heat upstairs to the second floor. Justin, I don't know, are you able to add? Justin, are you able to add to that a little bit or?
Yep, so the, the, we have a quote from Chapel Central to replace that said heat pump and, and new gaskets and isolating flanges for $8,200. And give us to heat the second floor.
So we could refine that too. If we needed to do that this year, I mean, we don't know the condition of it or does it need to be done before this?
Yes.
Uh, so moving on to the Civic Center, there are four areas on here. One was identified as the outdoor covered ice rink. We're just, as it's a, a project identified in the master plan, we're just not ready for that project yet where we set today a $2.5 million request. Civic Center roof over, roof replacement over the shop. We see that as a maintenance issue and to preserve the building that we're, we're investing dollars in. So that is staying in. Yes.
What's the shop?
Uh, it'd be the backside. I don't know exactly how.
It's here?
It's here, this building. Yes.
It's a separate building behind this building?
Connected to this building.
Connected, but it's separate. Is it separate or is it part of the building?
It's part of the building.
It's part of the building. I don't know how it's, I can't tell you exactly how it's joined, but it is part of this building. Uh, there was a request for a storage shed for behind here as well. Uh, that was removed. And then snow guards for the Civic Center roof, how this was explained is uh, right now in snow, snow piles up on the roof. They have to go out and snow blow the roof. Or up there physically snow cloud or snow, snow, move snow off the roof. So both the maintenance and a safety issue. That's proposed to stay in. Community Center, there were two items in there for using lost funds for a community center project and then replacement of carpet. Same story as the auditorium and City Hall. When we're unsure of the future use of that building or that future is, we're not, administration isn't in favor of putting in upgrades to the building. Moving on to the DOAC.
Sorry.
Yes.
Can I, can I back up?
Yes.
To the outdoor rink, was there any other option on that that was, say, that came in more like a million dollar, just the covered roof and not the, I would call it the more elaborate structural one?
Nothing was shown. I don't know of anything, but I'm sure there, there may be. You can find that out.
Okay, I, I, it just seemed to me like there was other options that were with that.
I think they were all speculation. I don't think there was any number, any actual numbers. I mean, it would have to all be, you know, it would have to be an RFP anyway, so.
Right. I thought there, I just, I felt like there had been some discussion that if there was, say like if they could get 250,000 from the leftover money from the, from the other local office of sales projects, you know, 200 something from Robinson, 200 something from the ballpark, that they could have come up with a million to be able to do that, that extra sheet of ice. But, okay.
But we can look into that and see if we can get some answers. Um, moving on to the Aquatic Center. Couple of, couple of things going on here. So the zero depth pool slide replacement, it has been replaced twice already. And we think, um, after talking with staff, we think we can get it one more year. Uh, but that is going to be a future cost that, that is going to be coming here, if not this year, next year. We did propose to remove it out of the CIP request for this year. The additional concrete is part of a phased project. So there's some grass between the boundary of the concrete and the fence or the boundary of the aquatic center is some grass out there. So this is just future expansion of the concrete. And again, this is just paying for a portion of it or getting a portion of it done. It's a phased, it's a phased project. $40,000, the storage shed.
Kyle?
Yes.
Justin, do you know the concrete expansion, would that go over by the slides? That fill in that big grassy area a little bit?
Yeah, so, so part of that was done this past spring.
Yes.
Out to the south. Um, I would say maybe half of that area. And I believe it would be almost all the way to the fence.
Okay, so there'd still be that border of grass between the, because kids love to run on that. Or if it's all concrete, obviously it's not a good idea, so.
I, yes, yes, it would still have the grass, but eventually if it's a phased approach, that grass might be.
Ultimately going to be all concrete.
What's the reason for that?
I'm not 100% sure. That came from? Yeah, that was a request from, from Parks and Drive. The reason is it's, it's just future expansion of the DOAC. If that's ever going to be a possibility or if it is a possibility and it's maintenance, we have to go and mow that. I think it's, is it $40,000 worth of mowing? Probably not, but it's future use, future expansion.
I just think it's kind of a nice place to have somebody be able to sit other than sitting on the concrete.
We want to know. That's what this is, that's what this meeting is for of.
So which is the possibility of future expansion. They don't have anything planned. Because I tend to think that green space is better than concrete and for water purposes too, I would think, but. I mean, if they, if they've got a plan, then great, but.
If there is a plan, it would, might be helpful to know what it is.
When you showed me the picture earlier today, it looked like the fence.
Yes.
There is, yes.
And the concrete is going to go up to that.
Yes.
Okay.
Justin, this, the grass clipping, does that play out with the filters at all?
It, it has potential to, but so far no. We've never, we've never had any major issues over there because of grass. Strike it. And then if, if we want to revisit it, we sure can. Oh, we could remove, well, I've got to note it here.
I didn't visually see that, what we're talking about, because I remember the decision we made on the fire department without pictures. That might not have been the best decision we made.
By the way, it's, it's, it's asphalt now. Somehow it got done.
So it's, it's this grass, this space here. So you can kind of see the fence here. So it's overall filling in the space.
I don't know.
Yeah, so then GIS, all of this space all the way to here and over, this is all concrete now.
That was done this spring.
That was done this year.
Some of we use it, like, yeah.
Whether it's futures, uh, sitting, I know there's, with this too, we put more shade umbrellas out there. But again, right as of now, this is, the only grass left is south and then this border here. So this is already all concrete.
So you're saying that's a good thing or a bad thing for them to run that?
Well, I, the grass is a great thing for them to grow on. They can't run out of concrete.
Can I think of one reason you want to get rid of grass?
Well, on the busy days, there is not any extra deck space. The, there's no shade in the grass. And so the, the deck area is full on the busy days.
Because there's shade, there's, you're talking about closer to the building now, aren't you?
Well, there's umbrellas.
So you can see this structure right here. That's an umbrella. And there was another one added right here. And so with the concrete coming straight across, I believe they set picnic tables and, and extra seating.
You could put picnic tables and umbrellas in the grass. It looks like we did before we put the concrete over there, right?
These are large umbrellas, metal, I mean, they're, uh, they're very large. They're different than, like your. These are large umbrellas, metal, I mean, they're, uh, they're very large, they're different than like your. But Justin was just saying that's what that is in the grass.
Yes. It's, and it's. A big concrete footing, but. I, I tend to agree with you, I don't know, want to necessarily. Concrete in the whole thing there, but.
I'd want to hear the reasoning.
Right.
Besides future planning. Because then if it's future planning, then if it's going to be, you know, whatever, if they're going to put a little lazy river. Then we put the concrete in at that time.
No, it's not, I, I don't want to mislead, it's not that type of. Future planning, it's the maintenance, it's the, it's the, the extra deck space, it's the shade. That's. Okay.
Well, that brings another thought, if they do put the lazy river in, then they got to take the concrete out.
So we'll stay here as well, um, there's also a request to replace the storage shed, uh, which is this structure right here. Um, our understanding is, is that it is owned by the school. Would like to. Own our own shed, we do store things in there. Uh, but the utilities for the lights and the irrigation system is stored in that, in that building. Um, and we, like I said, we use it for storage as well. So there is a request for 25,000 to place a shed out there.
Why is it owned by the school, it doesn't seem property?
Um, like, well, if I remember correctly, this was given to the city by the school. Does that sound right? This, this land here?
I don't know.
Okay, so this is, the school's here. And like I said, there's, they run, out of this building, they run the lights and the irrigation for these.
But the path is ours.
Yeah, but the, about the border now is based, there's right away on either side of the path. Everything to the right is school, left is city.
So should we just be buying the building from the school versus replacing it?
Um. But like I said, the utilities are, for the school are in that building.
So that's going to remain, and we're going to build an additional one. Because we use it for storage, they use it for the lights and the irrigation system. Which was fine when you had the. Joint Community Education.
But it wasn't fine then either, because neither was land. I mean, it, it's either the city's land or it's.
Well, I'm guessing that's how it got to be that way in the first place, it was a community education. So it didn't matter if it was storage and if it was for the lights and for the irrigation, it was all one at that time. But now it's not.
Totally separate budgets.
We store in there? I don't have specifics.
I would say it's the umbrellas and everything else, like that's, that's in off seasons.
And I, and I believe that. The rent department uses still for all football. Yes, let's say. Here and store boards and whatnot in there.
They don't play there.
Little guys. Play footballs.
So it'd be in a totally different location that would be more convenient too.
Yeah, there's.
I don't think location was discussed.
Location was not discussed, but it would be a storage shed for the aquatic center.
I also think part of the reasoning for it was to store chemicals for the. Treating the water at the pool, because currently they're stored at.
And they have to be separate from.
So is that what it's really for then, then we continue to store the things that we're currently storing in the school, it's a good thing? Depends on the size, I mean, how much can we, I mean, how much can we deal with the space that, yeah. I guess it'd be, I could put. Put all the little kids next to the chemicals. So we'll keep going on here, so, yeah, last one, last one if that's all right here with the aquatic centers replacement of the umbrella covers. Um, like I said, these are, this is another phase one here for the next three years, two a year. Um, they're expensive, they're large, it's just the use of life on the umbrellas. They're at end of life. So those are proposed to stay in. Uh, moving on to engineering, street improvement program, um, again, not a cash ask, this will be next year's bond. $10.3 million is what we're estimating. Again, that's in the bond column. Six street pedestrian bridge, uh. That is remaining in as cash. We're uncertain with. What that is going to, what's going to happen with that, we've started conversations with the NSF on. How to address that bridge and. Still in those conversations, but. It is a shared cost of the city, I mean, that's what we're still trying to figure out, I think it's just wise to keep some dollars in there to be ready to do something. One, one time, it's right. Traffic signal plan and the quiet zone improvements were removed. Downtown streetlights. Uh, this is the second half payment that we need to make for the streetlights that, the new streetlights downtown, so this is, we do need to keep this in. $250,000.
Any of that grant, that grant money for the street escapes, did we use any of that for streetlights?
Not for lights.
We could, but I'm not sure if there was anything left over. Because we were upsiding on that, I think it was 250 this year and 250 next year for. The light program.
I just know it was something I, I'd like to qualify for.
But I don't think that they submitted any. Because we did get the cash from the $400,000. But I don't recall what was in the upper voice. Because that was some time ago.
Moving on to the fire department, the mobile radio replacements. Um, the city of Wilmer was allocated funds, um, in this year's public safety bill, it's a one-time, one-time spending bill. Um, that we are still waiting to get final information on, no more information at the end of the year. Um, we will be receiving those funds before, by December 26th, I believe, of this year. Um, we are estimated to receive $992,000, but that final number. We will know, we don't know that final number until the end of September, so it could be more, it could be less. We're safely assuming it will be less, but.
All for public safety?
All for public safety, and we're still waiting on the clarification on allowed uses, we know it can't be used for salary or personnel, but it can be used, or destruction. But it can be used on equipment or fire trucks or radios or those types of things, and then. Uh, so that's, that's why it's moved over into that public safety bill column. The hazardous material containment system. Um, that is also reached end of life. The, uh, current system was homemade in the 1990s. It's sealed and taped together and has many different components, and it takes roughly 15 minutes to set up. This is from Fire Chief, it's beyond its useful life. And they're interested in a three-piece system that can be set up in three to five minutes, and has a potential lifespan of 10 to 20, excuse me, 10 to 15 years. Uh, so again, we're just looking at safety and maintenance, for current piece of equipment that serves its purpose, and that's why it's remaining in there. Uh, body armor, replacement tables and chairs, those were removed. Rescue struts, um, rescue struts are used to stabilize vehicles that have rolled over during car accidents. Gives the firefighters more safety options to remove victims from the vehicle without having to be around. Uh, so again, a safety ask. And this might be something, again, we're waiting for clarification, but that might be something too, that could be paid for out of that public safety bill. So there's, this, the sheet does not file like. We're going to skip over the outdoor lighting and fire station.
We can.
That is, I need to get clarification if that is a this year project.
Okay, I know, yeah, I know at one time he was talking. Uh, Chief Hanson was talking about, um, getting Wilbur Fire Department.
It's up.
What? Why did that go up?
It's last Friday.
Should you go on a town?
That's, that's why it's removed, I just want to make sure we're not.
That's why.
We're not paying for it twice.
It is lighting thing. Look forward to driving by it. Is it lit up and everything?
I do not, no. They just got it hung up and they're going to repaint.
Yeah, they're going to paint their, their runway where the ladders are attached, so that's going to be done. Cool.
Um, indoor lighting, uh, that was also removed. Um, obviously this would be moving LEDs, would be ultimate cost savings to the city long term. Is that something that could be done in the public safety bill as well? Probably not. Because it may, might be considered a construction or, which I know isn't, which is excluded, but we can, we will explore that.
Didn't the utilities pop up, wasn't there something going on with utilities?
Rebate program?
Yeah. I don't know.
I don't know what the scale of it is.
Right now or not.
But works for.
They came around, because they came to work anyway. And assessed what, you know, kind of changing the lighting, et cetera, they had money to do, I thought, I don't know. Worth a question. Do you want to check on that?
Seems like a reasonable cause for something that's going to save us money, the sooner we do it, the better.
We had Apex Engineering here and they assessed all the lighting and that too, so.
Floor, floor supporting in my garage. I had the electrician come in, took the ballast out.
LED ballast, yeah.
Hooked the light, the wires together, put in LED tubes. That was it. That was. It was cheap and it made a huge difference on my.
And your utility bill?
No.
Okay, we can move that back here. Uh, a problem, um, another big one. That is currently removed is the light replacement at Swanson Field, this is Greenfield. Um, $280,000, it's a, it's a big dollar enough. Um, and there's a lot of, there's a lot of requests coming out of Parks and Rec. Not to say that not all needed or justified, but. We'll, we'll get into that here in a little bit. So that is removed for the time being. Um, playground equipment, we want to keep maintaining the parks that we have, so that pass of 175 did remain. And then also. Uh, we'll skip down to Sperryville Pickleball resurfacing, this is just again maintaining, uh, facilities that we already have. Um, and it's time for that to be resurfaced.
Oh, thank you.
We were trying, is that five, six?
I thought there were five, at least five.
And they have to be resurfaced later?
Resurfaced.
They did a lot of use and the paint does come off of the surfacing because the. Sun is very tough on them.
I don't know, so I'm wearing my tennis shoes.
Your football, please.
So the, the bike and walking trail grants and the DNR outdoor recreational grants. Uh, those would be our grant batches for future grant programs, we want to make sure those, those dollars are remaining in there. And then also for Lincoln Park development, uh, that was removed for the time being. Uh, we can skip over payment, that pavement, that'll be a bond, that's the Civic Center lot out here. 19th Avenue Trail.
Civic Center lot out here, that's a lot of money. Is it bad, or what are we, are we adding, or what are we doing?
No, it's the whole thing.
It's the whole thing.
It's the whole thing besides the trailhead.
Does it include the gravel?
Yeah, trailhead area, so the whole parking lot would be completely.
Is it that cheap?
It's terrible. It's all.
It's better than the mall, right?
Sounds better than.
That isn't saying much.
So I think these really are, so. So 2018, the council approved the Sperryville or Pickleball works.
Uh, moving on to the police department, uh, they're looking for, oh, sorry.
Go back to the parking lot, do we have a prioritization of our parking lots, what that need to be done?
Justin, do you off the top of your head what that is?
I believe they're on the, I believe they're on.
They're on a CIP.
And they're on the, um.
The, the plan.
The robotics, I believe, they also did it. I believe they also did the robotics, so it would show them.
They're on the 10-year capital improvement plan, that was with the council, I don't have it memorized, I don't.
But Block 50 is really good. I, I'm just curious if we, if we prioritize our parking lots. Okay.
Um, the secured garage for the police department. Was removed, I believe this is a proposed shared site with the county. We don't have a lot of additional information beyond that at this point. Uh, the forensic computer upgrade, that's something that we think we can put in the public safety bill and, or even ARPA if it's not allowed. Um, the air exchange system at the public workshop, uh. That is put in the ARPA category and since Justin is here, I'll let you talk about that one.
Yeah, so that, that would be, um, for. Replacement of our. Carbon monoxide sensors that would automatically trigger the air exchange system when we have our trucks coming in or out. Those sensors are original to the building, or not original to the building, excuse me. Um, the units themselves are original to the building, they have been worked on. Um, but it's just. You know, it's one of those maintenance things that. Comes up. Is it? It's not something we think of too often, that's the highest priority, but. You know, when you have. 20 different pieces of equipment that start up and drive in an hour there.
There, honestly, speaking of ARPA funds, we hear about two other ARPA funds last year that we. Never actually spent, is that accurate? I've got that, we can look at that tonight too if you want, but it's updated. Tom was just looking, Block 50 is on the CIP for 2027.
About a million.
A million.
Uh, the Lincoln parking lot is 2025.
We want to cross it over, yep, so, yep.
Tell me about cold storage lighting.
Um. The lighting that we have over there now is.
Where's the cold storage?
Of course, cold storage is, um. It's the building to the east, it's right next, it was joined with the Rice Hospital. Where the couriers used to park.
Okay.
So, and it's just, it's just. Old lighting with the old CFL bulbs, and they're one every. Hundred feet or whatever, and it's tough to see, but we did talk about it, that that, that certainly isn't, doesn't need to be a high priority for us.
Maybe it needs to be researched now, different, by our state attorneys.
Door replacements. We'll talk about those.
Door replacements, um, there, right now our mechanics bay has three overhead doors, we replaced the center one. Because it was failing on us, and so we just. Put the other two in there, um, to kind of keep them on the same schedule. And, you know, they, I forget which year they were installed, I mean, they're. Been there a while, and then there was also, um, depending on funds, two to four, uh, walk-through doors that are in rough shape, rough shape.
Then how can we remove those?
Dollars.
Okay.
Just kind of get to the point where we have to make, make those tougher decisions, but. There's no questions on that?
The walk-through doors, Justin, how, are they're not good, how, you know, they're secure? They are secure, um. They let in a lot of cold air, down at the bottom is rusting out, but we did mention that, um. I think Kirk had a quote on. Those doors being roughly four to $5,000 apiece. And if we. Take the couple worse ones, maybe we can absorb that out of our operating budget. And wait on the overhead doors, because they are functional, and they're obviously more expensive, right, the slide overhead doors.
We took the concrete out from the Dorothy Olson Aquatic Center, it's almost about the same amount as the door.
Okay, so we put the LED lights in.
Well, that, I'm just curious.
Sounds good. Stormwater, we're ready to move on. Those will be paid out of the sales tax. The waste of the Iverson Park Loop Station, that will be paid out of wastewater. And then there is a request for holiday decorations from Main, from Main Street Department of the city. Questions on that? Moving on down to vehicles, the only one that's removed as of right now is a snowplow, lawnmower combination for the fire department to be used at that location. That's just a, it is a pushmore, I believe, that they have up there. I'm going to skip over the ladder truck. Toros, the two toros are for Parks and Rec, really to maintain facilities here. The current machine that they have, that it's used, it's past its, past its purpose, purpose or its life. There is a request from Public Works on the next four. For a new roller, a dump truck and a John Deere grader. Under CIP, we're proposing that the roller stay in. We'll talk about these in a minute. And as well as replacing a new power truck, which is also serves its purpose or serves past its life as well. And then moving on to the police department, more or less along their normal request, replacing four vehicles a year. The one that we maybe could have a conversation about, we have not, I have not had this conversation with Jim yet, would be, maybe removing that Chevy Colorado off the replacement schedule, but, or off of this year's, but.
Have they even gotten their cars in yet?
They, uh, two, two, they're, statistically, they're still being up.
But I think those two are from 2022.
From last year.
Yeah.
So that's another, that's another good point that we had talked about too, is if you're only getting two cars a year, we need to be asking for. Until that, until that changes, I think it's important to stay up to date on these vehicles. We can ask that, those questions and bring recommendations back. Take two of those off.
Oh.
Or ask the questions first.
I, I, I know that, I ask the questions first, but I know they need the vehicles. They're just not coming.
Right.
It's, that's just pretty more miles on the present fleet. And more repairs.
Another, another tool we have, this will be the last thing. I'll be quiet for a little bit here. The equipment certificate, we're looking for options of how to fund a fire truck, which is very expensive. Plus two more pieces of expensive equipment for a dump truck and a grader. That totals about $2.3 million. And there are options out there for the city to go into a certificate bond, the equipment certificate, which is essentially like a loan. Or we could work with a local bank to put together this smaller certificate for us to pay back over a shorter period of time, whether it's six, seven, eight years. But also, so which is favorable to us because that equipment is going to last well past that moment here, pay to back period. So. It's just an option at this point. You don't have to. Just back over to cash, probably not the fire truck, but some of the two pieces of equipment. But it's just another option for the council to consider on how we want to find. Large pieces of equipment like this. Large dollar amounts.
So obviously the, the ladder truck has been in the rotation. That we knew this was coming, but we put it off and all yet.
For a no dollar set aside for this truck at this time.
Okay, have we? Okay. We talked about the true need in it and.
It's about 20, it's over 20 years old.
By the time we get, it'll be over 20.
Close to 25 years old. It's a, it's a two year wait. And that, that's one of the things that we had talked about, that public safety bill could go towards this fire truck.
Just know that's a good ask.
Yeah. So, but we don't, again, I don't want to talk about this. We don't want to over promise and deliver. We just don't know what those dollars are going to be. And if it's a phased, maybe we can phase that out over two years or three years to pay for that fire truck at $600,000 a year. That's.
Have we ever done equipment certificates before?
Yes.
I was thinking maybe 10 years old.
But what did you say?
I was thinking it was maybe 10 years old.
Oh. Yeah.
So we can, again, again, this is, this is just our first look at it together. We'll make the change later, in the next minute, we'll get those sent out. But we'll just kind of more or less use that round number of 1.5 million.
Just a general kind of question?
Yep.
So if we, if we sold some city land, let's say it was parkland for a development project, how does that money go back into the budget and how does that work? Depends on where the, well, in the case of the rest, the one project they were talking about the other day. They could go on the general fund and the council could decide what they want to do.
Okay.
Or what department they want to put that money into. Any property sold out, the industrial park is put into the industrial park fund.
Sure.
Okay, council can also do what they want. You can move money wherever you want.
Okay.
Almost, almost.
The project, but there you go.
The three stormwater. The detention pond, you might connect those three. How are they determined? Are they street related?
No, these are new projects, so that's why they're all being under the local office sales.
Cause there was supposed, they have talked about doing one over on Ninth Street where I live, when the street was redone to finish the drainage issues that were over there. There's a, there's that ditch and the ditch doesn't hold water and the water backs up into the.
When was that redone?
That street was done. Two or three years ago?
Two or three.
Three years ago maybe. And that was supposed, there was supposed to be a retention pond that was kind of at the end, close to the park. Over there. And I've asked about it a couple of times and they keep saying, yeah, it's coming. And that's why I'm just asking how these are being determined.
I'm not sure how, what do they have for future?
Between Baker Field and Wilmer Avenue, South Swanson.
No, no. This is the southeast Ninth Street. It's dumb.
Wasn't you?
Pleasantly a way to street. And we've been lucky that it had dry years, but so squeak, flood and they get backed up and. That's what we were told during the.
I'm not sure it, I'm guessing that these came from that bar. Study on what was to be done. And we're just really getting into using the local option, sales tax money, so I, I'd have to talk to Jared about it. I wouldn't have any idea.
I just don't want it to be not, I mean, because the street design was done.
Far study.
It's my understanding, the street design was done for that to take place.
Number, our line, there is a southern detention pond. Between Highway 23 and 28th Avenue, struggling to see where that would go or where that is. That's, that's a bigger area between 28th Avenue and that.
Definitely Minar's.
Probably.
Yes, yes it is.
So behind Minar's.
Yeah, behind Minar's because there's a larger, the city owns back there that I don't think we can even sell. I think it's all just landlocked.
That's where that retention pond is going?
There, probably, if it's landlocked, if that's.
That's been shared for years.
Is that that area solid, Minar's?
I don't have, I don't have the plan in front of me, so I couldn't tell you exactly where it's going to be.
So we, I, again, we had our first pass with CIP and I just. One of the things that we had talked, or we have talked about internally with the mayor this morning is we want to bring you all a balanced budget. And we had to get creative. We had to do some digging. We had to just spend a lot of time on this budget. In order to give you a balanced budget without putting significant burden on taxpayers. We were able to accomplish that with one caveat is that this 1.5 million is not a part of the tax, of the operating fund. Or taxes, so this is. If we were to add anything out of CIP, it would be, we would have a deficit budget currently, or we would have to raise taxes. Significantly to cover that cost. So like I said, when we were getting creative, one of the things that. We had talked about was the community investment fund. This is the fund where essentially all of our 2021 bond payments in prior 2016 are being paid out of. This is not a current practice that we do anymore because our projects and our payments are larger than what the fund can sustain. So we levy for our projects now. That's that street levy that we've been putting aside for the last couple of years. So we look at our ending balance. Really is, is this peak here at 2023, there's roughly. At the end of 2022, I'll back up. At the end of 2022, there was $11.5 million in the community investment fund. We've made our, we'll have to make, made our payment here in 2023 for bonds. So rough estimate or snapshot, there's roughly $10.4 million sitting in the community investment fund. We have obligations to pay those funds off between now and 2031 to be, pay off all of those, all of, all of those bonds from 2021 to 2016. And there will be a remaining balance if no additional funds are added of 3.7, almost 3.8 million dollars left in the community investment fund. Which that, those dollars are not currently assigned to go anywhere. They just stay in the community investment fund. So in getting creative with a solution on one, accomplishing a balanced budget, which we, the city has not been able to do since 2016. We've, we are creating modest increases in operating, we're levying for City Hall, we're levying now for our streets. There is a slight increase, but a manageable increase. But in order to cover this CIP, this. Our proposal would be to allocate funds from the community investment fund to either cover one for one or soften that blow to a sustainable number. We'll play, we can play with numbers all night long, but it's, I mean, it's more of just the theory at this point. And if that, using the community investment fund is acceptable by the council in order to accomplish a balanced budget and being able to progress with these improvement projects for next year. And avoiding a large tax increase.
What are you proposing for a tax increase already?
Something in the law, which you'll see Monday night is a, well, maybe I'll just show you. Prefacing that this is no word, this is not final.
Yeah. What I was going, yeah.
This is not final. This will even likely change before Monday as we continue to plug away.
Yeah, and I guess we're not really looking for council direction tonight anyways, because I think that, you know, we're bringing this to you information now so that you can ponder this over the next week. And then when you also see the rest of the budget next Monday night. Of course, this, that's just preliminary. We have until December to do and finish the completed project.
But I asked that question because the community investment fund was that buffer, not to have to raise taxes the whole amount to use that. And that was the intent of that fund, if I understand correctly, was that it could buffer not having to raise the full amount to do what we needed to do for streets kind of thing. Versus being dependent on raising levy to cover the streets, the whole thing. So that's why I'm just curious that.
Well, I think we also have to understand if Kyle wants to talk about the deficit spending that, that's, that's been going on for how many years?
Since 2017. It's been.
What did they tell us in the audit that we were getting close to not being able to do that anymore, right?
We're there, we're there. We're at 44% reserve right now.
And what are, and we want to be at 40?
About 50%?
Yeah, about right where we're at.
Yeah, it's.
44%. 2023 expenditures, 44%. So we're, we're at that point where we should.
But we shouldn't be.
Spending that, spending that. Yep, yep. So the, the point of the, the, the way the community investment fund has been operating with the street bonds, street improvement bonds, there's two components of it. There's the special assessment portion that the taxpayers would, would have, and then there'd be the, the other portion in that community investment fund that money has been able to carry and cover the other part of that. So it would exclude the city from levying those dollars. From 2010 through 2020, the average issuance was $1.9 million. From 2022 and 2023, we've significantly and intentionally increased our street budget. So the last two years alone, so for next year's payments, we need to levy $800,000 for just those two bonds. So that the whole, just the use of the community investment funds will have to be addressed somehow because it will be unsustainable to cover the city's portion of those bonds. Just as the payments are significantly higher. So. So that's the, kind of, just a different direction. As, as we've turned the levy, we've actually had a, a specific levy for the street improvements now. And the little spike in, you'll see in 2022, the city was able to pay off some bonds early. So then all the money from those bond funds that were there to pay those went into the community investment fund. So that's why you'll see that little spike because they're able to close out those bonds a few years early.
So again. We're looking at a tax. On Monday. And this, again, please do not hold this to this slide tonight. This is still a work in progress. So this tax rate here, so operating essentially costs have gone up roughly two. Two points on tax, two percent on the tax rate. Again, this number does not include CIP. If we include CIP, it's about 10.
This includes the increase that we got now, DA and all the other stuff?
Yes, it does. It does reflect also the increase in the property, about the net tax capacity or our tax base. We don't have those final numbers either, so once again, it's an estimate for right now. We'll have better numbers by the end of the year, by, before we adopt the budget in December. But this does reflect a close tax base that we're increasing.
So when we talk percentages too, this is just tax rates, we're looking probably anywhere between 12 and 15%. But that's what that 2% of the tax rate equals. If we're looking something like 10, 10 points of jump on the tax rate, it's more along the line, closer to 30%. So it, it's a lot of money and it's, it's a, that's why we had to get creative. So it, it's a lot of money, and it's, it's a, that's why we had to get creative, and we want to bring this to you, but I think we want you to know that it, it should be, should be known that we put a lot of work to just collectively and as a city to give you a balanced budget, I think that's really important to have. And then also trying to come up with solutions on how to move forward and keep forward with our CIP while utilizing other funds that may be available to us, and soften that cushion over the next, maybe two to three years.
How can you speak at all to the operating budget, that's a pretty big increase from 23 to 24? I mean, obviously, there's some inflation realities taking place there, but.
Sure, that is a, that is a type.
You guys have worked really hard on this, but.
No, that, that might be a typo on my part, I apologize. That is, I'll get to the actual number here, I think that's 10.2 is. That I.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
Get you the actual number. Something.
Cause I think that.
This is supposed to be again, 47, 47.57.
I, I just thought Kyle was getting significant wins.
There, that looks better than.
Evidence that the 10 million of Kyle.
Oh, this.
Cause the 10 million is more than.
Yep.
Than the.
Right.
10, than the total, oh, you wanna correct that?
Oh.
Can I get rid of the, there you go.
That's the raise that he wants.
Yeah, sorry, this is a working document, so.
Please excuse my. You're bringing us good news there now, right?
Yeah. That's what it looks like, that 10 million there, that, that's, that was what it would take to do the full 1.5 in CIP. So it's about, like I said, I would say between 12 and 15% is what you would expect to see. And that's by design. Because we can't go any lower, we can set, once we set the preliminary, we can't go any lower. And we just, there's still unknowns between now and the end of the year, where we don't want to corner ourselves and be out of options, I guess, so. But really, tonight is to get, isn't so much on this, I mean, it's all tied together, it's just more along the lines to get your thoughts on us being able to explore and use the Community Investment Fund to help sustain the CIP, at least for next year.
Sorry, I had a question on the, the street debt that's showing up on those figures.
Yeah, I might be wrong too. Well, no, that should be right, no, that's right.
That's what we have to pay. And we're not paying that out of the Community Development.
That's correct, so the last.
We paid that out of the Community Development Fund, we could put the CIP back in to.
Could, but it's not going to be sustainable for the life of the bond, it's a 15-year bond. 800,000 times 13 years, well, it's not gonna be full, but if we put, cause next year, we're scheduled to pay already out of the CI, Community Investment Fund, 1.119 million dollars, if we added the the, the levy portion, it'd be 1.920 million dollars, so it would accelerate the depletion of that fund. And the, the logic behind the, the street, the street levy in the years past, it was a percent of the budget, two mils, and then and then the following year, up to four mils.
Yeah.
This year, if we did the same path up to six mils, it would have been like 1.1 million dollars roughly. So we did put that down to only what's required to levy for the bond payments to keep our minimal balance in those bond funds. So that was kind of a logic there to only levy what was necessary for next year. So it, it is an option to do that, it's not a, it's not sustained.
I was trying to understand the figure.
I mean, it's essentially accomplishing the same thing.
Is it, is it real to think that we can just keep raising taxes every year to cover, cover streets? Is it?
It's a good question, no, I'm not even, I'm.
I just don't think it is, and we've been doing that already. This year is even more.
So there's, there's some things that we'll be looking at next year to, to maybe manage our bonds a little bit differently. And what, Tom, if you want to explain that a little bit?
So each year, we're required to have a, a certain dollar amount, 105% of our next year payments in there. With that, that's assuming we get 1/15 of the assessment income, that's going to be in, income over the whole duration of the bond. With, with our notices that we send out, people, some citizens prefer to prepay. So therefore, we do get an infusion of cash early, or, or along the way, maybe as houses trade hands, or, or whatever you might have, so with that, the fund balance, there, there's money in there typically over the required balance for the future debt service. So if we were to actively manage that, we could maybe adjust our street levy a little, I haven't gone very deep into exploring that, so I don't know exactly a figure, I, I wouldn't want to guess that one. But that is, that is an option because there is a, a minimum balance required, and I, I know that we're just fine right now, but that would be an option to look at maybe decrease levy or a certain bond if the balance is already there, so.
Discount to compare.
There wouldn't be interest on the tax roll, I guess, yeah.
So that's, that's one of the options that will be explored in the future, as well as, there are two grant programs that we're looking at for next year as well, to help with Set Business 71 and the State Streets for All Grant that we've already received planning funding for, I mean, it's, it's, this isn't a done deal, yes, so we'll still have to evaluate this every year, specifically, well, this, but specifically the role.
So what does that 10-year plan really look like, and is it sustainable at 10 years? But that's a, that's a yearly conversation that we need to have with.
Future, I'll look out, so, you know, we have asked the, the state for 10 million in bonding dollars for our streets for 2024 and 10 million for 2035. Yes, for those two years, probably, you know, we could lessen whatever we're ready to do, or lessen whatever our cost would be. But it would also help us probably then, that we would have to, for our crack ceiling and fox ceiling and things like that, we could put more cash into fuse in that, and then that just gets a whole lot more streets further out. And you get a whole lot more done, and you continue doing what we've been doing, at least for a few more years, and then, you know, we could probably do with that also maybe 1 million or 2 million a street project for. But, I don't, with what, the way things are going, I don't know if a 1 and 2 million dollar project is going to get you more than a block and a half.
Rick, help me here, but, I mean, we, there were years we did the bare minimum for a street repair.
There was a couple of years we didn't do anything.
Yeah, a couple of years we didn't do anything, and people were saying, utilize bonding, get the streets done. So you go on one side, now you're going on the other side.
Here, just, the conversation over here was, what if we didn't do the parking lot out here? How would, I'm trying to think it through while we're talking here. So that bonding for this parking lot was.
1.26.
1.6?
Yeah.
If we didn't do that, so, but it's part of the bonds. So that doesn't save us.
We would have to, we would just be reduced.
To come up, we'd be using a bond to finance, but it basically is our expense because there's no one to assess. So how would that fit into it, we delayed that a year? What would that do to our cash situation?
Not really any different than, because no matter what, it's always going to be expensive to city.
Right.
Just like, just like, you know.
If we're trying to come up with some extra cash, what can we delay?
Well, this isn't a cash project though, so we're not.
I know, I understand that, but the bonds still cost the city. If we bonded less, we'd need less for, but I'm trying to think it through, that's all.
The parking lot needs to.
But the 1.6, I don't, I mean, we could run some numbers as to what it actually costs us a year. Over 15 years, the 1.6 and the interest on it, I, sometimes, sometimes that isn't that significant to your overall bond to, yeah. You know, we'd have to run some numbers on it to see what the savings would be, but you know, you could be what the cost of it is this year compared to what the cost of putting it in next year might be 1.8 next year. You know.
I, I just thinking if your, if your checkbook is empty, what do you prioritize? That's kind of how I'm feeling right now, it's slow, but what we need to do. Cause we can't keep doing what we're doing.
That's a good point too, and I should have pointed this out one hour earlier, this is part of a grant too. So we've, we've already received $500,000 for this project, we're just asking to make up the difference here.
The path.
The path.
Yeah, the path, yeah. Well, that was scheduled to be done this year, but the project came in considerably higher in the bids. And so, we were able to say, well, let's bid it next year when we bid our street projects, because then maybe, because we bid that just this fall, so maybe if we bid it with our street projects, we'll get a better number. And we were able to push that off until next year anyway, so. Without threat of losing the 500,000 dollars.
Just another question on on the stormwater, at one time we were talking about Southwest Wilmer Avenue to the Swanson Field. That wasn't a 2024 project?
No. Yeah.
It's not Boss Park and it's not Trot.
Between Bakerfield and Wilmer Avenue, that one, that's scheduled in 2025.
Okay.
If you're into CIP.
Okay. Let's check it.
Just one more question, just the downtown streetlights? Have, do we know that we've spent all that money, or is there any possibility of spending?
The first draw didn't have everything spent, so I'm going to be verifying.
But could we use, if there wasn't all spent, could we use some of this?
Yes, we can use, we can use the streetscape money for the downtown lights, that I do know for a fact.
Yes, I know that, but I'm just curious of where we're at on that, since that has to be closed out too, if we, if we haven't done something that we could use for streetlights, can we do that?
Well, we have 250,000 we have to pay this year too, so 250,000 this year and 250,000 next year.
Right, but we could reduce the 250 by what we have available with the streetscapes if there was something, that's what I meant.
If there's anything left, yes.
Is the council comfortable with us continuing to explore CIF, using that transfer from the Investment Fund on CIP?
We're not comfortable, what's our other option?
Would be to either absorb that into levy or to cut the CIP. To give you a balanced budget. Again, that's our overall goal, is to give the council a balanced budget. Or maybe it's a mix and match, maybe there's more, half the CIP is put on the levy and half is put on investment. For a balanced budget. We were supposed to have a balanced budget up here, so.
We did, we could explain, James, huh?
Well.
No, no.
You, the council had made the decision to use reserves to balance the budget, and so you were deficit spending. Basically. To use the reserves.
Yeah, we're down to six, seven months of operation. That disturbs.
Yeah, and that's by design, we, we receive cash twice a year from property taxes, LGAs, I mean, that, that 44, 46%, 50%. That magic number is, that'll get us to that next round. That's by design, I believe that's gasoline standard now is.
Six months.
That 40 to 50%.
So you're looking for an answer tonight if we're okay with the, the Community Investment Fund?
No, I don't, I think that, you know, I'm, I guess what we'll probably be proposing then for preliminary is that we won't be using it. And so that it's going to shock everybody when it comes to the paper, what kind of increase you're going to have, right? So either, you know, and then, and then you can contemplate it over the next few months on how you want to handle this and, and because of course, it, it all comes down to December.
When we, if I have. We have to set it at the next meeting, right?
Yes.
Yes.
For preliminary.
Preliminary is set next.
We can always, we can set, we can't go above what we set, so whether it's 15% or 30%, we can always go lower, not go higher.
You know, so you can contemplate that over the next week here, and even next week, if you say, no, we want only this much to be in the CIP and funded under the Community Investment Fund. And we'll have to figure out how, what goes under, what gets cut under CIP. We certainly can do that.
One more question. So if we do that this year out of the Community Investment Fund, we probably can't do it again?
If, so, after all that, if you go back to that graph. That graph where it's, it's decreasing down, it, as a 2031, assuming only bond payments going out of the Community Investment Fund, it'd be a 3.8, 3.8 round number. That's assuming that after bonds close out, we don't transfer anything, we're not transferring any other income in from like a Public Works Reserve, which has been a funding source in the past. So that is the worst case, so there would be, and if this year's ask would be 1.5, there's gonna still be money after our bond payments are made, so.
But we probably can't go there very often.
We can't, this can't be every year.
Do you have a graph that shows what it looks like if we spent 1.5 this year?
That'd be awesome.
Oh, and 1.5. Then if we go ahead and we spend 1.5 for the CIP out of the Community Investment Fund.
Yeah.
Where does, where does that graph look like then?
About halfway lower.
I can, I can fix it, yeah, I can, I can create some, I can put some more lines on here to show you. To show you kind of what that option would be, maybe. So our, our goal was just to kind of land it softly, just to, to try and ease into it, because we know it's, it's a, it's a change, it's a new school of thought. It's, we're just trying to find ways to lessen the blow for the taxpayers, and then, like, our street, street patching is, their crack ceiling has significantly increased as we've done more work as a city on streets, so we've found, you know, gotten ways to get a little creative and make sure that those are funded. So I, we've had a lot of collaborations internally and figured out ways to try and do this the best we can.
Appreciate the creativity. I've seen the budget, I know we're seeing it Monday, right, like, hard to make a whole lot of comments, but.
Handouts.
We have.
Should I hand?
Yeah, we do have handouts of the budget here, just for the fund, general fund. So, of course, you know, the general fund is what what is really, that drives the tax levy, the rest of the funds get funded through the general fund or bonding assessments.
So you'll see on the very, on the expenditure side, the very back page, we just don't have anything planned for a capital improvement tran-
um, on the very, on the expenditure side, the very back page, we just don't have anything planned for a gap improvement and transfer out. So that's the only thing that. It's at one point eight eight nine in twenty twenty-three. We just don't have anything built on that line for twenty twenty-four. Those numbers in there, that's what translates to that for twenty twenty-four. We do have some, uh, a little bit of, with our new Tyler technology, we've kind of changed a little bit of our mentality at City Hall as well. Like each department doesn't have a supplies budget, we kind of centralized it. So you'll see a few budgeted items for twenty twenty-three, they won't be there for twenty-four, but then the City Hall as a whole will have a bigger supply budget. So there's a few moving parts to streamline for our new uh charter accounts.
Didn't we do that last year?
So will we be able to allocate those so that we know what it costs us to run the events center? We know what it costs if you're centralizing those kinds of things?
Those departments like Public Works, Police, Fire, Park and Rec, they're going to have their own separate budget no matter what. We're talking about City Hall that has an engineering, has a city clerk, has administration, has the mayor council.
So City House one.
It's, yes.
But not, okay, so just for us to be able to say, we want to know what is it costing us?
Want to speak to about Park and Rec though, because we can't allocate.
Yep, so we can talk about that a little bit. So to the civic center, specifically, the event center specifically. Utilities, we're, we're putting everything under, we'll call it the civic center uh department. Uh, so we're really taking almost everything out of the event center side. Uh, main thing is utilities. Uh, it's actually not metered over here, it's metered through the blue line arena. So we, we don't, can't give you an exact cost on what the actual utilities are to run this size of building. Best estimate's around sixty thousand dollars. So that increase is now in the medicine. Civic Center, I'm sorry. Whatever we want to call it at the end of the day, yeah. Uh, so you're going to see a lot of those costs go. There might be some small tools or equipment and maintenance, but a lot of those like utilities and it's going to be more on the event civic center side.
Yeah. So it's difficult. We cannot just have a re, event center department, is that right? Yeah, because the major issue, the major cost would have been the utilities. Because staff are the same and we don't allocate various times. I mean, like Rachel's time, we do not allocate that, she's parking park. Our three maintenance people out here, they do here, they do the civic green, and they do the blue line, and they do the park, and they do the rec event center.
We'll probably likely be switching to a whole month, a whole month out of the year for ICE. So that's, there's another, that should offset ICE time costs as well for revenues coming in. But that's, if you look specifically at the utilities, it's going to be a jump. But it's including this and it's including figuring in planning for twelve months of ICE.
When we got the audit, there were, uh, he made a comment that we had some departments that have been overbunded for quite a few years, they're adjusting for that too.
That is, that is part of the balance of budget.
That is your balance budget. So we, yeah, there were some, um, some things that would just weren't, uh, yeah, they were low last couple of years, like uh an operational expense to the law enforcement center for the city portion of operating costs for that building, for the jail and the police department. Uh, also like some like our paid-on-call firefighter insurance, we put in there. There's just a couple of times that they've been historically high, so we just accounted for that in the twenty twenty-four.
Is legal being divided now so that like?
That is the plan, that legal will be just under administration, planning and zoning.
So that projects would show up separate from other legal.
Well, under planning and zoning, whatever legal work that they do.
Yeah.
You know, and of course, if there's any legal work that is a project, it should go to the project directly anyway.
So in, in the year, it's under one department, that will be separated out by our.
Yes.
But the dollar will. It's not being posted.
So when you, when we get it in the new software, that is the plan. We created those accounts under various departments instead of one legal department.
Any other questions?
Okay.
Next week. Thank you.
If you have any questions, please feel free to call us, nothing.